Okay, now we're going to move into our study session and I can tell you that this is one of my very favorite study sessions of all time because maybe because I love this, but before I start, there are not words to thank those who work on the Hill for us. There are not appropriate words, I should say. And so presenting today will be Angie and Jeff, but we want to also thank Dr. Dixon, Deputy Superintendent Jones and Norman and Assistant Superintendents Voorhees and Nelson. So Angie, I'll turn it over to you.
That was such, those are such kind words by Chair Bellnap and it's not even just the list of people who you just mentioned. There's so many in our agency who helped support the board during the session and we love it. We get very excited for it. Maybe I'm just speaking for myself, but I think all of us at USBE get very excited when the session comes. So we're excited to share this with you today and we're very much hopeful that you all will please interject, ask questions. If you, if you want to take time to talk amongst yourselves, this is your study session. It's your time. We want to help facilitate that and hear from you. And we definitely don't want it to just be, you know, an hour or two of the Jeff and Angie show chatting, although I'm sure you would love that. So just to start out, last month, when we gave a little bit of an overview of the session in the all day or the full board meeting, one board member asked, what does US, what do USBE staff do after the session? And you may remember that I mentioned that the very next week, we were going to get together all day and, and work on what I call our implementation guide or, or it's an Excel spreadsheet where we go through essentially every single bill that we were tracking. We were tracking 128 bills and actually we were tracking 215 bills, but 128 of those 215 are included in the bill book. So one of the documents that's uploaded to Civic Clerk for this item is what is called the 2022 Public Education Summary or the bill book. You all received a hard copy of that yesterday. I hope that you enjoy that. If it's not something you want to receive in the future as by way of a hard copy, please let me know. We'd be happy to save some trees, but I know many people appreciate having a hard copy. So 128 of those 215 ended up in the bill book, 80 were passed, bills that passed, and then the remaining 48 would be accounted for in the bills not passed. And so we review those 128 bills and identify what needs to be done by USBE or if there's no action. So a request of the board members was to maybe take a look at what that looks like. So we took our monster Excel spreadsheet, which oftentimes has assignments like, you know, Ben will be drafting this rule, but it's Malia Height will be implementing this. And we made it hopefully a more condensed version of our implementation tracker. This will also be helpful because you'll see in just a moment, when we share an overview of the session, we often give the session by the numbers, including the number of dollars that we receive, the number of rules we anticipate enacting or amending, new programs, et cetera. So this is a snapshot for you. All of this information is included in the bill book, but this is a more condensed summarized version of essentially our collective R to-do list over the next year coming out of the 2022 general session. You may want to bring up this document on your own screen as we work through the PowerPoint because Jeff and I are going to be sharing a PowerPoint. We won't have this up at all times. But as we go through each of the different rules, programs, RFPs, reports, et cetera, this could be a quick guide for you. And if you have questions as we go through each section, please let us know. So Jeff, if you want to move over to the, to the PowerPoint, we can begin.
Excellent. And Angie and I are just going to tag team through all of this as we always do. And again, please feel free to interrupt us. I see lots of you have gone to the black square, so I can't see your face, but if you have stepped away or you think that this is going to be a talk at presentation, you are wrong. So I would recommend, you don't have to come on camera, but I would recommend, get a website up and ready, get your phone ready if you want to do this from your phone. I sent an email to the board, the email just a moment ago with the link for this presentation and a code you put in because this presentation is interactive and we want to see your reactions. We want to hear some things from you. So I'm going to give a quick tutorial on this next slide with the instructions. If you have not gotten that email yet, you can just do what's on this slide. You can do this on your mobile device. You can pull up on a web browser on your phone. There's my phone. Type in menti.com and put in that code. You can use the QR code to pull it up and it's going to pull up whether you're on a website or on your phone or an iPad, this presentation. I want to highlight in this bottom right-hand corner, you see these emojis here? You can click on those and it will show up on the screen. If any of you have this pull-up already, hit a heart or a thumbs up or something and it will, you'll see it show up. We got a thumbs up that just came in. So if you're having some initial feelings, you'll notice one of those is a question mark. You could hit the question mark and if Angie and I see the little question mark flying by, we can pause and just say, okay, somebody seems to have a question. Or you can just give us hearts, thumbs up. There is on some of these slides, a cat, a little outline of a cat head. If you just feel like you want to meow at us, like whatever you'd like to do for the reaction, that is going to be great and that will give us some, some good indications as we're going along. As if, if we put you to sleep, if you need questions or if you're liking what you're hearing. If we're feeling good, everyone to hit the thumbs up for me. You're feeling like you understand. Mentimeter is your friend or menti.com.
Oh my word, that we're just going to keep clicking the same things over and over.
You can. There is no limit on how many times you react to the same slides. You can heart it, you can thumbs up it, all of those things. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to move to the next slide. I'm already loving all the reactions we're getting. This is going to be really fun. Okay. So this on, on your, your phone or the, if you pulled up menti on your laptop, you should have the ability to type in up to three different words or wins that you feel happened this legislative session and we're going to get a word cloud that will populate on this slide. And I want to know, both Angie and I want to know, what were the wins? What did you look at from this session and say, yes, I am so happy that happened?
Jeff, tell me again where you, can you type it in if you didn't get the, where do you type it in?
So you just go to menti.com, M-E-N-T-I.com and there will need to be a code and the code is 207868. And then you should be able to be following along with the slides on your device and be able to type in.
Well, it didn't work. Of course it didn't work. I needed more. Never mind. Just go ahead. I will, I will speak out if I need to. Thanks. Bye.
Perfect.
Over and out.
You can also put things in the chat, Carol. We got that open as well. All different forms of communication. But you're seeing a lot of allocation, the teacher-directed time, WPU increase, record funding. Okay.
Jeff chat is disabled.
It says it's disabled for you?
Yep, it does.
I apologize, Carol.
It's not chat feature. I will send you a picture of what it should look like.
No, it's all right. Never mind. Don't worry about me. I'm just, it takes me a little longer. I'll, I'll just. No, we want to, we're, we're all willing. We're all willing to, so we can all get on board. More fun. Well, I tried to do that. I just don't have a split screen, so I can't do it on my left desktop at the same time I do it on my.
If you want to do it on your phone, that's probably the easiest way.
I can do it on my phone, maybe. Let me try.
My phone is working really easy. So just do it on the phone.
I just did it on my phone. Just took a picture of the QR code. It just popped right up.
Oh, did it? Okay.
I didn't even take a picture. I just.
Go back to the QR code for one second. Let me try that.
I can do that for you, Carol. Not a problem.
I'm just being the lazy learner. Okay, there we go. Now I did that.
Okay.
Okay, now it's on my, now it's on my phone. Now I do what next after it's on my phone? Then you can just do it, use it?
There should be options on your phone to put in the words that are the big wins for you.
There should be, but always.
If you press the little gold button that said, what did it say?
The gold button on the QR code.
Go back to the QR code and just don't take a picture, just aim it.
Oh, aim it. Don't take a picture.
Sorry, I was wrong. And then there should, the little yellow button.
Little yellow link should form at the bottom of the, your camera will focus on the QR code and you'll see a yellow link and you touch the link, but you don't take a picture.
Um, let's see. Hang on a minute. Hang on a minute. Okay. So we just hold it up to my, hold my phone up to it. Is that what I want to do?
With your camera open.
My camera open. Okay. Okay. There we go. Okay. Now what do I do when I've got, now I click on the gold thing?
That's right.
The button or the little tab?
It's right down in the middle. It's kind of a little.
Oh yeah, it went away. Hang on a sec.
So zoom in on the QR code again. It'll come back.
QR code you guys for one second. Sorry. This is a learning experience. Oh, well, that one way. There it is. Okay. Did it? Now done. Okay. Now I've just got the happy hearts and all that stuff, right? Okay. So when I'm supposed to, and I can type in the greatest win. Okay. Enter a word. Oh, I see that. That's easy. Okay. Okay. Teacher, teacher bonuses.
And I just want to point out, board members, what great teamwork that was right there. Bringing one of your own along. I love it. Thank you all.
Patience I would never have. Well, that, but that's important. So, okay. So I, Jeff, I think we're all on board now. I am now.
Okay. Excellent. So I just wanted to take a quick moment to just kind of look at the word cloud. It kind of gives a sense of how you and your colleagues are feeling about the session, what were the big things? Clearly funding and WPU. If the word is bigger, that means more of you put in the same word. So the biggest words are the ones that most of you are kind of coalescing around. The smaller words, it may be fewer of you, but definitely looks like WPU funding increase, Alday K. and Beverly Taylor Sorensen would be kind of some of the bigger wins that you were really excited about for this session. We're going to go to the next slide. What we're going to do next is we're going to kind of take this slide and we're going to break it apart by each hexagon and cover what each of those things are. So for example, the seven new programs will cover what they are and some of kind of the implementation plans as much as we know at this point because we're fairly quick off the session. But the idea here is to really give you a good sense of the next moves that we're going to be making in all of these different areas as we now have to carry out the session and allow for you all to kind of let us know if you have any thoughts, concerns or questions as we're starting to move toward implementation. If there's anything in particular, this is a great time to discuss and bring it up. But with, I'm going to toss it to Angie and she's going to take the first hexagon. Oh, before, before, there is another question. Of those different areas on a multiple choice here on your phone, we want to know which is most of interest to you? You have the option to select more than one, but we do want to know of these areas from these hexagons, what are you the most interested in? So that Angie and I can kind of gauge where we should spend more of our time. Okay, someone does want to talk about the jazz. Angie and I discussed this a little bit yesterday with Chief of Staff Sarah Young.
I don't really, I just put it.
As Sarah Young said, let's just, what's going on in the fourth quarter? So it looks like the amended rules, new programs and LEA reports are kind of the biggest areas of interest as well as USBE reports. The funding, a little less of interest right now, but we'll definitely dive deep into the different roles you can expect and, and the new programs. Perfect. Well, with that, I'm going to toss it to Angie so she can quickly cover the funding.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Jeff. So I'm going to be giving some stats on funding that maybe are a little different than what you've already heard because Deputy Superintendent Jones and team are always so great to give such an in-depth report and detail on all the line items. Some of the items I'll be covering are much more high level and just some facts that I thought you might find interesting. So let's go to the next slide. And I think collectively, we should all give a great, I love, I love a lot of the hearts because as we saw, many of our favorite moments from the session were related to the WPU increase, the record funding. So this is definitely a time for celebration. So a couple of the stats or facts that you may not have gleaned yet from the $590 million of new funding that came to public education this year, 298 of those 590 were ongoing. So almost $300 million of new ongoing funding. I mean, that, that should be a celebration in and of itself. When you break down the ongoing funding, that 6% of that or 219 million is related to the WPU increase, 23 million for enrollment growth. There's 23 million that's reserved in case we underestimated enrollment growth, for example. So one thing I would mention here is I believe the number is at about 3,900 new students is how many we anticipate will be joining us this fall, which is very exciting to have such great enrollment growth. And the legislature reserves or allows the state board to have some reserve funds ongoing in, in case those increases are actually higher and we see more students enrolling in our system than we anticipated. And then the remaining $56 million will go to the different line item programs. So great news on the ongoing side. And then on the one-time side, we have $292 million. The majority of that or 269 million is coming from the public education stabilization account. If you can move to the next slide, Jeff, we can see a breakdown of where all of that public, the, where the 294 or at least this 269 are coming from. You can see the large amount, 91, a little over $91 million are going to be distributed to our LEAs to support capital and technology. And that will be, it's, it's very broad. And so our LEAs will have the opportunity to determine how they're going to use those one-time funds. Next, we, another celebration or I saw a high point for some of our board members was the $64 million that was appropriated for 32 hours or four days of educator-directed flexible time. 50 million for small schools' critical capital needs, which the rule related to that will be coming ideally next month. There's going to be a panel that will look at proposals from our small school districts for capital funding needs and, and then be either awarding grants or loans to support our small schools. And that's $50 million. $30 million one time for our USDB for two buildings. We've got $9.5 million to support SB 127, that early literacy initiative, 8.6 for small and charter school base funding, 4.5 for English language learner software, 4 million for UPstart. There was also 4 million ongoing that is going towards the UPstart program. $3.5 million for students experiencing homelessness. You may remember, you received one of the education highlights a number of months back, highlighted the great work going on at Clearfield High. I believe it was Clearfield High in Davis School District where they created that homeless teen center. The legislature has appropriated $3.5 million to award grants to other school districts and charter schools to create homeless teen centers as well or to recreate spaces. To, this was, the next one was a very, a big topic of the session, which was funding, in this case, $2.3 million for period products in schools. And then last, we've got $1.5 million for the civics pilot program, which will be distributed or be used over, I'm not sure if it's three or five years, Jeff. I think it's 500,000, 500,000 over three years each. So any questions on the funding? Because I believe this is the last slide on the funding before we move to rules or discussion of funding that you'd like to have? I love the cat emoji. Thank you. Somebody used it. I think that's the first time we saw it.
I can't help it. Vice Chair Davis.
I just wanted to note, I think there is so much to celebrate here, but I want to just note, we didn't get the funding for, that the market raises and things for our agency. So it's just something to keep in mind for next year if we want to keep good people.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Chair Hansman? You're on mute?
I, I think what's really important here is, is this was a very unique year. And the question is, moving forward is, what's next year going to look like? And all economic, things that I have read in the state of Utah is another, another repeat. So my, my question is, is it possible, and maybe it's later in our, our session today is to see some trends over the last couple of years? But we need to be, be ready for a repeat this following year.
Thank you. Angie, if you don't have those trends, would maybe you could send those out after?
Yes, we, we have to do that. And, and the good news is at the end of this PowerPoint presentation, if there's something we did not cover or things you'd like to discuss in the future, we're going to be soliciting that from you all as well. What kinds of things would you like to discuss related to the legislative session in future meetings?
So I think we just got two of those to be very conscious of our own employees and what's happening there. And then also a trend line. Okay. All right. Board Member Lear? You're on mute?
I had, I, this is revealing my forgetfulness or something, but can somebody give me a two-sentence definition to remind me what UPstart? We, we passed that or that was passed so long ago, it's kind of, it's kind of drifted out of my memory. Help me define the services that UPstart provides.
I could almost answer that. UPstart is an online program for pre-K kids.
Uh, okay. And it's available to?
Everyone.
Every child who wants it. Is that right?
Every child who wants it. They're, they're, they actually try and send, sent, center on those who might be economically disadvantaged. But once they've hit all those places, then they, they let anybody in. And the distribution, a computer goes to those who are economically disadvantaged and those who aren't, it doesn't.
Helpful. Thank you. I have another question, but I'll, I'll come, I'll wait in line.
No, you can go ahead. This is a good time.
Well, honestly, I can't, I can't, I can't recall it a moment, but.
Okay, then we'll wait. We'll wait for that.
That's great. Thank you.
Board Member Cannon?
Yes, I had a question about UPstart as well. And, and by the way, my granddaughter participated in this and she is a reading whiz. So it was really helpful for her. Is this $4 million because of an increase in demand for UPstart? That's question one. And then question two is, I, I read in a magazine somewhere that other states were coming to Utah to purchase our UPstart preschool program. I just wondered if you could verify that and let us know if Utah is making money off this program.
Angie, I'll give that to you, but they haven't filled all their slots as far as I knew. But maybe they did by this time of year. But Angie, you may know more.
So Vice Chair Bellnap, it looks like Superintendent Dixon may have her hand raised to answer this?
Well, I don't want to have her answer everything. Just kidding. Dr. Dixon, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I had a good conversation with UPstart, I guess I would say lobbyists and their president and CEO. So I've been chatting with them recently. And I think the next phase of this to answer Board Member Cannon's question is talking about saturation point. They work in, in all, in most other states. They've got contracts all over the country. So our licenses are not going to other states, but they have contracts with other states. Okay, so we aren't making money off, off of initiating UPstart. The private company that did it is. Well, we as a state, correct or not, but it would be the, the company, they, they, just like they contracted with our legislature to provide services for our students, they're doing the same in other states. So there are a variety of ways that UPstart is being funded throughout the country. In our state, it just happens that the legislature has funded it. I do want to clarify that it's for four-year-olds. Some of their siblings. So if you enroll as a four-year-old, when you're a five and six-year-old, if, if you, if there's a four-year-old in your household, sometimes they don't disenroll you, so you can continue to use it, but it's targeted at four-year-olds. In our state, it covers, I think, if, if the correct staff members were on who, who oversee the program, they could tell you exactly the percentage of four-year-olds that currently are using the program. But I think the company is, is saying that 70, about 70% of four-year-olds would be a saturation point. There's just a certain number of families that won't ever log in or use it. And the high cost is based on the infrastructure behind the scenes where, where they have assistants who actually call and work with the families and check in with the families. So it's a pretty comprehensive process, not just the software. And I think we're kind of getting to that point where they all want to sit down and have a plan. That coherence that we talked about, where's the endpoint? Where's the, the threshold where it saturated the market? So can I just follow up and ask, is this $4 million to expand the program in Utah? The dollars are all about expansion. When they get new dollars each year, it's about expanding the program. Okay. Well, has any thought been given to perhaps offering this to kindergarten kids or struggling readers who might not, who might be beyond four years old, but who COVID made it really difficult for them to succeed?
Madam Chair, do you want me to keep going?
May I respond to this?
Oh, Jennifer's on. Go ahead, Jennifer. Sorry.
Okay. Jennifer's the Director of Teaching and Learning. Their, last year, the legislature gave, I believe it's $5 million to support kindergarten students. And I believe this year they gave another $4 million to continue that effort. So there's $4 million in the one time and there's $4 million, I believe, in ongoing. Angie, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is money for the kindergarten piece to address like COVID issues.
Okay. So Jennifer, I, I have a constituent who wanted to access this program and was told that their child was, you know, over age. So is there something particular you could help me with to, to see if that could be accessed?
Yeah, if you want to send them our way, we can connect them with the right people at UPstart and make sure. They might be over capacity. I haven't heard that they are for the five-year-old group because there was limited funding in that space. But there, there was an opportunity for kindergartners this past school year and coming this school year for kindergarten age. So if you want to send it an email to me, I'll be happy to direct them to staff.
Okay. Thank you. Board Member Norton?
Yes, this is not an UPstart question. I wanted to go back to when we were talking about trend lines. I also think that another thing in addition to just looking forward to next year and planning that out, but that we implement part of our discussion from yesterday with a five and 10-year trend, not trends, but a timeline going forward. And, and I also find it very helpful to add, like I like to plan out a three, five and 10-year. And I think, you know, many corporations, that's what they're doing too. So we could even look at a three, five and a 10-year timeline on where we're going.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Norton. So we could maybe look at that as well, Angie. Okay. I don't see any other hands except Board Member Norton's, which she's done. So, okay. Go ahead.
Great. And I've been, I'm taking these notes now as we go. So I, we really appreciate your feedback. And I'll go ahead and turn it to Jeff now, who's going to discuss the rules.
Our favorite part, we just finished doing a bunch of these and more are coming. Yes, lots of hearts for rules. We love rules. So I am going to show this next slide just to give you a sense of how. just to give you a sense of how many bills impacted a rule. And you can see here, these are all the bills that passed this session that is requiring a rule amendment or a new rule be written. The majority of them being amendments. But just wanted you to kind of get a visual representation of, of what this looks like to staff when we start to sit down and say, now, what is in each of these and what does this mean? So that we can bring you rules in your committees. And also in time for a lot of these bills to, when they go into effect or when the funding goes into effect. Two dates that I want to just point out here in terms of helping everyone with timelines. The vast majority of bills at the very bottom, if they do not have an effective date listed in the bill, it is an automatic effective date on May 4th this year. So may the 4th be with you, as you know, everyone always talks about that. That will be the effective law coming before you on May 4th. And funding, of course, always typically begins July 1st, unless, of course, there is current fiscal year funding that was provided for a particular bill. But as you can imagine, with the funding hitting July 1st and a lot of these bills going into effect by May 4th, that's why you saw a decent chunk of rules today in committee and as a teaser, you will see even more in May. April and May are very rule-heavy months for your committees. So I wanted to switch over here to.
Wait, we do have a question, Jeff. So go ahead, Vice Chair Davis.
You may have said this, you may have said this already, but was that a complete list or was that, is this just the highlights?
That is a complete list of all the bills. Yep.
Thank you.
And now what I have on the screen is kind of the, the doc where this is our condensed implementation document. You all have this in your backup as well on Civic Clerk. So if any of you are curious about some of the things that will be happening related to any of the hexagons that we covered on that throughout this presentation, this is basically the document form of what you're getting presented with today. So I'm going to show you just kind of really quickly the rules column to give you a sense of all the different rules. There are some bills that will impact multiple rules and some bills will only impact one. But you can kind of see here in this column under rules in column B that I've highlighted, there will be 28 different rules amended and/or created, most of them amended because of what came out of the session. What we tried to do in this column as well is also predict the likely month that we will have the rule ready for you. We can't say which committee yet. But the month subject to change, so don't get too excited if you see a May and you're like, I thought that was coming next month. It may, we may kick it off if we have time. But this is just kind of gives you a quick glance of all the different rules and bills related to them. I don't know if you want me to pause here or if any of you have had a chance to look at this on Civic Clerk, if you have specific bills and rules you think you'd like to discuss amongst each other right now or with us. We're happy to do that. If you have feedback of heads up, I think X should be considered when writing this rule. This is a great opportunity to kind of give those notes to us and staff so that we can start considering that as we're crafting these. But Chair, I'm not sure if you would prefer I go line by line or if I want to pause.
Um, Jeff, I'm going to probably throw this out that, that I think that it would be, otherwise we may be doing committee work in this meeting. So what I would say is that you do take some time now before our next meeting, before our, before our next board meeting and say, I have some concerns about this before they write the first draft on this, so that they might have some thoughts or input from each of you on an individual and yet a collective basis. So I just would suggest that, Jeff. Board Member Earl?
Yes, is it, and I, I guess I'm just asking this as a broad question. We normally address all bills within usually the first couple of months of them coming out. Would that be accurate or being effective?
Mostly, yes. You'll see a lot of rules. There is a few this month in April and then next month in May's committees, you'll see a decent amount as well. You'll see a fairly decent amount in June. It starts to taper off at that point. We have put off rules into the fall that are not time-sensitive. But May, April, May, and then a little bit in June tends to be a much bigger month in prioritizing rules, just in, in terms of making sure they're in effect when they need to be for whatever specific programs require, whether it's application deadlines or it needs to be in effect before the new school year and whatnot.
Okay, so if a bill passed through, we can anticipate that it's probably not going to take a year, right, till the next legislative session? Okay, so if we have any bills from last year that we're still working on, do you anticipate any of that?
I may pause here. I see Angie's hand is up. Maybe she has a good answer or it was for a previous question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring to your attention a couple of practical and then legal deadlines we have. So the Rule Making Act or the Administrative Rule Making Act gives each agency 180 days from the date that the, a bill becomes effective to, from, until they are supposed to file a, a draft rule with the Office of Administrative Rules. So in general, that would mean we should be filing rules by November or December at the latest. So that's the legal requirement for when we're supposed to have rules finalized or a draft submitted to the Office of Administrative Rules. Practically, because we work with schools and schools work on a, you know, they, they begin their new school year in the fall, we do our best to do as much of the rule writing and, and, and have facilitate all of that through the board before the beginning of the school year, but that doesn't always happen. And I did just want to show you, for example, in the left-hand corner, you'll see HB 315, R277925 is an example. That rule is not as time-sensitive because the stipends related to this program are issued in April, meaning they're doing that right now for the prior year. So we actually have time on a, a rule related to that bill. We, we purposely put it in August committee instead of May or June because we know that for rules that are more time-sensitive, we, we want to prioritize what we request or recommend be put on a committee agenda. There will be a couple of rules like that. The other practical timeline or, or issue that we have is sometimes board members or stakeholders have a lot of interest in a rule. Two rules I can bring to your attention or that I can think of right now where we did not make the legal deadline, but it wasn't necessarily because we didn't start discussing the rule. One was the bullying rule. After there was a big bill, I want to say in maybe 2017 where the bullying provisions were changed significantly in Utah code, it took the board well over a year to actually get that rule into place. The other one is when we had large revisions to our sped manual and the special ed rules after there was an audit related to some issues, but then also at the same time, the legislature did a wholesale recodification of the special ed portion of the code, that took us 18 months. And we did let the Administrative Rules Committee know we were behind, but a lot of that was because board members, it was, those rules were discussed multiple times of, over multiple months in committee and full board. In the case of the bullying rule, I think we had two public hearings. So the rule would be filed with OAR, there was a public hearing, there were revisions, and then it was filed again, and then there was another public hearing. Many of you are, are familiar with that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that sometimes the rules do not get filed with OAR in the timely fashion. But I wouldn't say it's for lack of trying. I would say it's because the board's very conscientious of stakeholder feedback and, and deliberative in their process.
Okay, I was just trying to get a feel for usually what our timeframe was and what the critical turning points are for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Earl. Board Member Straight?
Yeah, I saw several questions.
You can only have a half a one.
Oh, man.
Go ahead.
So, uh, when does the interim begin for the legislature?
Yesterday. Go ahead, Angie. Well, when the session ended.
Correct.
That's, that's right now even. Okay.
This is considered the interim, but the committees don't generally start, like the Education Interim Committee, they don't start till May. The legislature generally takes April off and for the most part, oftentimes they'll take a, a month in July or August off, and then they generally take off December, except for some of their appropriations and management committees. But they do not generally meet in April with the exception of an occasional audit committee or something.
So, so this is where I'm going with this. One of the overarching concerns that I have are things that we need to be prepared for is the discussion of that balance between the general fund and the income tax fund. And I'm just wondering, what is the process that we're going to follow to be prepared? So that we can be impactful on that on that one that occurs. I have big ideas in my head, but I know now's not the time to present it and I just want to stay engaged in that and I want to make certain that that we're being responsible. So give me a little bit of understanding.
Yes, Angie, can you do that in a, in a few minutes or should we add that to our list of things to be prepared for? I'll take either one.
I think both. So I'll take less than one minute. I'll just state that I believe that the Public Education Appropriations Subcommittee will likely discuss that this interim. It, it won't likely be discussed in the Education Interim Committee because remember the Education Interim Committee is really the policy committee. Public Ed Approves is the appropriations. So I think there's a good chance, although I can't, you know, of course, it would be up to the chairs. But second, I, I think that might be something that we'll add to our list as maybe a, an item in and of itself that Deputy Jones, Superintendent and I and others could, could maybe work through a discussion with the board on that.
Is that okay, Brett, moving forward?
Yes, let's move forward.
No, I just wanted to make sure because we, it's coming. It is coming. So.
Ready to go.
I appreciate that so much. Okay, are we going back to Jeff or to Angie?
Thank you. Are there any other questions related to rules that might be coming or specific bills or? You can always send us emails. One thing I'll piggyback on Angie's answer and just do a general reminder as well is May 4th is the effective date of, of bills that don't have one listed at the bottom of the bill. It is also the, the day that the legislators can open bill files for the upcoming session. So they can begin writing bills at the beginning of May. So just think if you're having a Cinco de Mayo taco, you should be having a thought of what bills do I want my legislator to be opening at the same time? Carol?
I'm not sure when the right time for this question is, but I also want to know when do we start working on full funding for all-day kindergarten that's optional? And, and maybe make it a higher priority next year or? I, I was just really disappointed in partial funding.
I don't know that they can answer that, but Carol, I, I, I'm hoping that you appreciated how we did our priorities this year and gave everyone opportunity to think about them and then we ranked them on our own. But we will start on those. Scott, will we start on financing in August?
Actually, ma'am, our plan is just to discuss this process with board leadership and review the process that we took last year, this year, starting in finance committee meeting next month. So we then get guidance from the full board on what else to pursue, you know, in addition to full-day kindergarten as early as your June meeting. So that when we do come to you in August, it's board-driven on what exactly we're pursuing, you know, to provide the business cases to you. So that's the plan right now is to make sure that we first identify anything else in addition to Board Member Lear's, you know, question about when will we start the process? The start, the process will start next month with the board at your direction.
That's great. We got a thumbs up there. I just love this whole thing that we're so far ahead. I remember doing them sometimes in the January meeting and it was frightening. So thank you. Nice question, Board Member Lear. Go ahead, Angie or Jeff?
Vice Chair Belknap, I just wanted to add also, kind of to piggyback to both what Jeff and Deputy Jones just stated. We are also going to begin bringing policy requests to you in May to give us the green light to start reaching out to legislators to open bill files. The first round will, there's two bills I know of that did not pass last session due to running out of time, and so we'll bring those two forward for your attention. You may have noticed yesterday, one of your motions related to law and licensing was about a policy request. So that will be a standing agenda item beginning in May moving forward, and we're going to try and get those to you earlier. And this is the reason why I wanted to just quickly share something that I don't know how many of you are aware that, that legislators have two opportunities to prioritize bills. On the front end, let's say a legislator has 10 bill files that they've opened. A, a House member can prioritize four for drafting and a Senator five. What that means is if they put a priority on that bill, the ledge staff who draft bills are going to prioritize those bills first before they prioritize any non-priority bills. What happens, because legislators know that USBE can provide a lot of expertise and support on bill drafts that we request, they don't often prioritize bills that we request because they usually use or reserve their priorities for bills that either number one are going to be very complex, difficult to draft, or maybe something that a constituent requested, or is, is there like number one policy priority? That is why you'll often notice that a lot of our bills kind of come out late in the session. Number one, it's because we didn't request them until later in the year. But number two, it may be because they weren't prioritized. So we are hoping that we can get as many of our policy requests before you earlier on this year so that we can start reaching out to legislators and asking them to open bill files. The other time that legislators prioritize bills is at the, the last week of the session. Once bills are held in rules, they're, the, the House kind of essentially controls the board in the Senate and the Senate controls the board in the House. And each legislator gets to say, of my remaining bills that haven't passed yet, I want this one to come out first, this one to come out second, this one to come out third. And then there may be some, oftentimes that's really all they get. And then leadership from the opposite houses lets the Rules Committee know these are the order of the bills. We want to be released on the board during that last session. So you probably have listened and you, you hear, you know, it might be Senator Colmore over in the Senate and in the House, it might be, I'm trying to think, a, any really of the representative leadership like Representative Moss, and who might read out a list of bills and say, we, we make a motion to remove these bills from rules to get on the board. That's that second prioritization process. So I don't think I've ever shared that with you before. If you have questions about that, I'm always happy you can call me later. But it is a unique part of the system that I don't think many people realize goes on behind the scenes.
I just wanted to piggyback on that, that one of the pieces is too, is when we do a prioritization as a board, you work for that. You, you work with the legislators, you try and get that to go through. If they're running a bill and it's not on our priority list, they may call us for information. They might ask us questions, but you are not pushing that unless the board prioritizes it. So I think it's interesting to note that sometimes we don't have that opportunity, but they do want information from us. Okay, Board Member Earl?
Yeah, maybe I have just a little bit of philosophical.
Jenny, you went back.
Sorry, and I had a great start too.
Okay.
And I apologize, my video is not working today. It's been on and off. It keeps kicking me off. So just a couple of things. So Senate, House Bill 93 from last year, we have not addressed yet, just an FYI. Would be great for us to actually put that into rules somewhere. The other thing is, I have a little, maybe a little different philosophical view, but the, I think our priority things, yes, we should get someone to run those, but I, I, I think I'm have a stronger opinion as I get older, more experienced in this, that we need to simplify what we're doing in education instead of expanding out more and more programs. And that's what I would look forward to this next year is the simplification of things instead of application of new policy after policy after policy that, that is creating more requirements for our districts as well as uncertainty, I think, for educators too, wondering how it's going to roll out and what it's going to be. So quite honestly, as we move forward, that's what I'm going to. So quite honestly, as we move forward, that's what I'm going to be looking for. But those are just thoughts I had.
Thank you, Board Member Earl. Okay, so Jeff, are we back to you or Angie?
I believe that is it for this section. So we'll go to Angie for new programs.
Jeff, so if you want to move to the next slide, you can see the seven programs. And as I was reviewing this, Jeff, I think there's actually eight. Because if you look at SB2, I think there's seven bills, but eight programs. Because if you look at SB2, although the one, Mental Health Scholarships is in some way a program. Why don't I go through these? You can see the seven we've got here. New programs that are related to the different bills that passed. We've got the Computer-Based Social Skills Development Program. That is not one that USBE worked on or really knew anything about. So I know that it is a, a program that a third-party provider presented to Public Education Appropriations Subcommittee and is meant to support students in social skills development. But I, we're going to be required, or I believe we're required to contract or issue an RFP related to the Computer-Based Social Skills Development, and we'll see who applies for that. But I, we don't have as much information about that because we just didn't work on it upfront. But we will have more information as we work through the RFP process. Of course, HB 193, we now have the Full Day K that accompanies our O E K program, which we're excited about. And it was one of the board's priorities. HB 273, the Civics Innovation Grant Program. You may remember that a version of this program passed in the 2020 legislative session. Representative Johnson was a big proponent of civics education. There was, there was fun, there were funds that were appropriated in 2020 and then they were withheld or, or pulled back. So I believe Representative Johnson wanted to redesign and update that program, and that is what HB 273 is. You'll remember there's $1.5 million that were appropriated one time to provide grants to teachers for, to support students in their civics education, $500,000 per year. HB 386 is the Innovation Grant Program where teachers can seek approval from their LEA for them to get an innovation grant from USBE. And I believe that one also has $500,000 per year over five years. So I think that one was $2.5 million. HB 417, this one's related to one of our policy requests or supports. It's Representative Berkland's bill that provides a separate pot of funds for our high schools that have less than, or schools that have less than 100 students, or 1,000 students, I apologize. Now, instead of the funding being taken from the LEA where the student is enrolled in order to provide funding to the provider, if you have a smaller school, there's a separate pot of money, just like we have for our home and private school students, where the funds to pay the provider will come from that separate pot of money instead of being taken from the LEA where the student is enrolled. SB2, as I mentioned, there's two in here. One is the homeless teen centers, which I, I mentioned a moment ago. I think it was 2.3 million or 2.35 million to provide grants to LEAs to be able to create those homeless teen centers in their high schools. The other, we talked about today in Law and Licensing, the Mental Health Scholarships. The SB2 provided the authority for the State Board of Education to use $1.5 million of carry-forward funds from the School-Based Mental Health Program for a grow-your-own-type program for the staff that are generally funded out of this program. Or, so remember, the School-Based Mental Health Program was the $26 million ongoing that provides funds to LEAs to be able to hire or contract with qualified personnel like school counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, school nurses. And I may have missed one, but those are the four top that I can, that are coming to mind right now. We've had carry-forward funds because many of our LEAs have found it's very difficult to find people to hire or even contract with. So in order to fix this problem, we're trying to grow our own in those areas and, and, and get supports up to $14,000 per year for two years for staff to become qualified to, to be hired in one of those qualified personnel areas. So that rule, R277622, actually went to law and licensing this month. So the full board will see that next month. And then last is SB 127, the Early Literacy Improvement in Schools. When you look at this bill, you'll notice that there's a lot of existing language in there. That was because in 2020, a, a similar bill was passed by, and I believe it was Senator Milner as well at that time, and also funded. But then quickly due to the pandemic, the, the funds were withdrawn or, or taken away. But the, the language and the code remained to support professional learning in early literacy and for instructional coaches. And then this year, Senator Milner took that language that was already existing code and made significant amendments. As we know, it's a very comprehensive bill. And we'll look forward to seeing that implemented. So that's it for right now on the programs. And I'm happy to answer questions or allow you all to discuss amongst yourselves.
Vice Chair Davis?
HB 3 is an oxymoron, just saying. That's all. Just pointing.
Yes.
Amen.
Board Member Lear?
And I just wanted to point out in response to Board Member Earl's comment a few minutes ago, which I am increasingly agreeing with, that of these seven, maybe two of them, maybe three were things we asked for. So maybe our message needs to go to our legislators to say, we are an ocean liner. Help us turn more, remember that when you, when you have programs you're fond of.
Thank you. I think that's a really good point. Go ahead, Angie?
All right, let's go ahead to the next slide and I'll turn it back to Jeff.
And now we get to talk about our favorite topic, reports. We've heard a lot about this. Yes, we talked a little bit about reports. Lots of thumbs down. Okay, maybe not. No, maybe not so much. A lot of discussion today, well, not a lot, but a decent amount of discussion today in Finance Committee. So those of you in the Finance Committee are already aware of how we are attempting to streamline and reduce reporting, which was something the legislators asked us to do last year with House Bill 300. You will now note six new reports for us and 10 new reports for LEAs. So they didn't necessarily listen to themselves. And we will now be tasked with trying to figure out how to streamline all those new things. But with that, I'll show you just the six that require reporting from USBE. And yes, Brent, straight, your reaction you just put up is exactly how many of us feel. House Bill 50 is the Intergenerational Poverty Mitigation Amendment. This bill was not one that we were really tracking too, too closely. It was one that was created by a different interim committee. It was a committee bill with a different interim committee. And it does have some new requirements that we, the State Board, must report to, I believe it is the Education Interim Committee, practices, policies, procedures that we have implemented that show how we are mitigating the cycle of intergenerational poverty. So that is a new one to keep in mind, not one that we asked for, but one that clearly is getting elevated in discussions in other committees regarding all that you do to mitigate these issues. And Board Member Davis, is your hand up from previously?
No, it's, it's, I think she already had it up. Board Member Earl?
So is this going to add an excessive amount of new reporting? Or are you saying that this is something we, we pretty much already do because education does help mitigate intergenerational poverty?
That is a great question and one that kind of is the question from this bill. The bill was not very prescriptive in what it was looking for from us in terms of if it's what we're already doing, if it's new things we're doing from this point on in the future. The bill did not say. So it is kind of a, I believe it's a one-and-done interim report. I may be wrong, so don't quote me on that. They don't have the bill pulled up in front of me. But it is, I think it's one that we can probably collect a lot of information that we already have at the State Board level to kind of report to the legislature on what it is that we're doing. And we'll work closely with our, with Robert and Camille, who oversee a lot of these programs, to kind of get that report created.
Okay, I just wasn't following this one. This was somewhat new to me, so.
The other thing, this language explicitly requires this report to be included in the superintendent's annual report. So, and, and again, as Jeff stated, it's a little bit more ambiguous about what to report. So I think we're going to have a lot of freedom to determine what, how we create that report.
Next is House Bill 273. Discuss this actually in Standards and Assessment today. The rule already making the amendments moving forward. There is a reporting requirement both from our perspective end, you'll see in the subsequent slides, the LEA perspective. If you receive the grant money, we will be required at the board level to report back on how things are going with the program, a very generic report. And if there were any third-party providers contracted, the bill does also require that we report on that as well. House Bill 302, I'm going to use my cheat sheet here because I've got the implementation sheet on here and I want to make sure I'm not saying it incorrectly. But we will need to report on the, how the Advisory Council is doing on this. So this is the bill that requires educational services be provided in the language that is spoken at the home. It's a very high-level summary. It also creates this educational interpretation, you can see where my cursor is, and transition services procurement advisory council. Say that 10 times fast. The idea of this council is essentially to, is to provide advice on procuring educational translation services. And so this council will provide support and work with us regarding procuring the, the translation services. And we are going to have to include in the superintendent, superintendent's annual report how that council has gone, what they have recommended, kind of like a, a summary of what they did. But this is all related to procuring those services. House Bill 380, I'm going to use my cheat sheet here because this is easier for me. We have to report on, or excuse me, 374, Sensitive Materials Bill. As you recall, this is a bill that prohibits pornography and pornographic and indecent material from being in a school setting. So think all the four walls of the building, not just the school library, but the full school setting. This is a one-and-done report. All complaints we receive at the state level, we will report to the Ed Interim Committee by November 1st of this year. LEAs will also be required to keep track of all the complaints that they receive up to November 1st. They will report that to us and we will include that in our report to the Ed Interim Committee. Board Member Earl?
Yeah, is that okay? Yes, and my question has to do, is this primarily through the audit, through our audit hotline? That that will be, that we expect to gather information on this? Okay.
That is my current understanding. And if any staff members feel otherwise, please correct me.
Our new library specialist, FTE, may also be the one collecting those. So it, it could depend. Oh, I see Jennifer is, may want.
Yeah, no, Angie, you're right, right where I was thinking. So we are hiring a, a library staff. We actually have the position ready to offer, just doing some reference checks. So hoping to start that position soon. And that person will be primarily responsible for tracking this information for the report along with implementing the program and, and library in general.
And how will they gather that information?
Just how people will contact us, either if it comes through audit or like audit sends it to us anyway, or emailing us directly and then they'll find ways. Not sure, since we haven't had any complaints yet come through that I'm aware of. But we'll create some kind of system to document those and categorize them and, and respond to them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Great. I did want to highlight on the Civics Innovation Report, we wish there was more of this language upon request. So we don't have to report this unless it is requested. I wish they all said upon request because it might help us prioritize the reports that legislature wants over others. Many get sent and we never hear back. So we did like seeing that. I wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything else. So Senate Bill 127, obviously there will be some annual reports to Education Interim Committee by November of each year. And that is a recurring report that we'll be giving on updating how the Early Literacy Outcome Program is doing. And then Senate Bill 191, this is the Innovations Bill, one of the two innovation bills. This is the one that is at the school level and would free up 35% of restricted funds to use to fund the innovation plan. We will be required to include in the superintendent, superintendent's annual report how that program is going. So those are your six reports that we now have to do. Feeling good? Feeling bored to tears?
Oh, I gotta get my phone out to put a thumbs down.
Or you can yell at it. I don't know if you just feel like that's what you'd prefer. Next, I'm going to quickly touch on the 10 reports for LEAs. I touched on some of them throughout this. I thought thumbs down on that already. Here are the 10 reports that LEAs on some level will have to report on. Whether that is, most of these will be up to the State Board. Some of these might just be out to their local board. They have to give a presentation, the staff of the LEA. So I'm going to go back to my cheat sheet so that I, you can see here in column E. And again, you have this as well. You can kind of run the north and south, if you will, on these charts and you can see. So period products, so today the LEAs will need to report on how they use the 2.3 million that came in for the products. That report will come to the State Board. House Bill 193, Full Day K, will, again, the use of the 12.2 million will need to be reported and the outcome measures of those participating in a full-day K program. And, and remember that is separate from an O E K program. House Bill 230, this is one that does not come to us. But if the LEA suspects with a refugee or immigrant student that the student is being trafficked, they are required now by this bill to report that to law enforcement to kind of double down on the already existing reporting requirement if you suspect that there is child trafficking going on. House Bill 273 will be a report to the State Board on LEAs on how they use the civic innovation funds. 374 will be the complaints received on sensitive materials. House Bill 386 is the innovation program at the teacher level. This is the classroom-level innovation bill where we can give up to $5,000 per innovative, innovative course that the teachers propose and get approved. LEAs will actually report to ULEAD, so this will go directly to Mikel Withers, which is kind of a new, different thing. We haven't seen a whole lot of a specific area where the LEA has to report. But ULEAD will be in charge of receiving the reports from LEAs on that. House Bill 428, the LEAs will need to submit their plans to the State Board on how they are going to be a discrimination and harassment-free learning environment and school. And House Bill 475 has several reports based on how the funding from the stabilization account will be used in the different pots that were outlined in that bill. So that was like fire hose version. You all seem super enthralled.
Board Member Lear?
I did try to count, but I again want to point out that two of these, if I counted right, of the 10 were things that, that State Board expressly requested. And the others didn't come from us. So when LEAs complain about reports, I'm not, it's not all about blame, but I do think we need to point out that we are, we, the board are not asking for these programs specifically ourselves.
And Board Member Lear, I think it's actually just one. The only one is HB 193.
That's even better. I was trying to be generous and I'm not, again, not all about blame, but I just think that, that, I think Jenny's message is a really important one. And I want to be. And I want to be very cautious ourselves and conservative ourselves and then explain to LEAs where these report requirements are coming from.
Thank you, Board Member Lear. Board Member Earl?
Well, and along that lines, expressing to our legislators that we want to be partners with them instead of just pulling something up and running with it without coming to the board for at least some consideration.
Thank you, Board Member Earl. Okay, just for consciousness, we have 15 more minutes. I'll quickly go through these RFPs and so I think the next slide lists them all. I'll go as quickly as possible. So I already spoke about the, HB3 has the, an RFP related to that software. It's computer-based social skills development. So we'll be contracting with an outside provider for $300,000 for that software. The next two, the HB43 and HB125, we'll just be amending an existing contract related to that hospitality and tourism program. So it's not a new RFP, but an amendment, as well as HB103, the Early Morning Systems Amendment. We already have a contract currently with Panorama, who is the provider under that program. We'll be updating or amending the contract based on the new bill.
Didn't we just do that? Sorry.
Oh, maybe it already was done.
We approved that last month, I think in March. So.
It may have already been done. I'll have to check. I'm not exactly sure what the amendment is. Some of these things, just like some of the rules we already approved, like the HB193 rule, as well as the rule on the $10 million bonuses. We're covering things, but we, the board may have already taken action. So, which is good news. Then in HB162, we'll be doing a sole source contract for period products to be sent out to our LEAs. And then HB270, the Parent Access to School Data Comparison, we're going to be contracting with an outside programmer to help us develop that. HB273, there's a potential RFP for a third-party provider of curriculum. I don't know that that's required. And then HB302, a potential RFP for Language Services. It looks like there's a couple of questions. Let me see. Let's go, Board Member Earl first.
Yeah, mine's on House Bill 273. I really want this one brought before us. I want to know who are, if we choose to do a third-party provider, who it is and what they're associated with. So this one I don't want just put back into just a consent calendar or some kind of consent agenda item.
Jenny, I appreciate that, but it might be on a consent, but it can always be pulled off. I just want us to be careful that we're not trying to hide anything, but that it will always come out to us.
Okay, I'm just saying this is one I'm following close.
Okay, I like that. Thank you so much. Board Member Klein?
Yes, HB270, the Parent Access to School Data Comparison. You said we're going to be hiring a third-party for that. Don't we already do that? Isn't that what the data gateway is for?
So it would be an in-house, when I say contract with a third-party provider, it's just like contracting with a person to do some programming that, we do that a lot with USIMs right now. So all of the employees, for example, who work to do programming for USBE are not all in-house, like ongoing FTEs. We contract with, and I don't know, third-party provider is probably not the right word. They're contracted staff. So they'd be acting just as a regular staff person would. They'd have the same confidentiality requirements, but it's just to do some programming related to the data gateway to provide this functionality. Currently, the data gateway, there's a lot of comparisons you can make, but not, not the way this bill requires. So it will require some programming. We're going to be using existing funds. So there's not going to be, we didn't receive an appropriation for it or anything, but we will be using a provider's not the right word, a contracted programmer to do that instead of our in-house staff doing that.
So follow it. What is the difference, what is it that they're going to be doing that the data gateway doesn't already do? Because I thought it already did those comparisons.
What it doesn't do is you can go in and you can select different schools to compare. But what it doesn't do is, let's say I put in my address in there and I want all of the schools within a one or two-mile radius to pop up. Data Gateway doesn't do that right now. I would have to know that ABC Charter School and ABC District School, or in many, you know, you might have four district schools and three charter schools that are in, you know, a two-mile radius of your home. What the functionality that is not there that will be there is you would put your address in and you'd be able to compare schools that are within a certain mile radius of your address.
Okay, very cool. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Klein. Board Member Earl?
All right, that made me think of another question related to that. What will be the comparison items? Or do we decide those comparison items?
I believe the comparison items will be the existing, like what you can already look at when you look at compare schools. So the, what is currently on the data, sorry, I'm trying to think of the word, the dashboard, the data gateway. Not just school grading, it's other things, but.
So it might be, it might even be programming that's used, for example, someone's social-emotional programming, something like that?
Yeah, school culture on there.
Let's go, let's go to Darren. Go ahead.
Yeah, I believe that the bill actually just ties directly into whatever the school accountability metrics are. The Compare Schools tool on the data gateway is only for the three assessments, English, Language Arts, and Math, and it will allow you to compare both achievement and growth. If I remember Representative Peterson's bill, it specifies the school accountability requirements, which includes more than just those three assessments.
Thank you, Darren. Angie? All right, let's, one more slide. I'll try to go through these quickly. Sorry, there's only three left. SB2, I believe, has two RFPs. Let me look quickly. I'm using my cheat, oh, it's the, it's an RFP for an immersive student learning program called Infinity STEM, $453,000 one time. This is something that, again, USBE wasn't involved with, but we do, some of us saw their presentation in PEA. So we'll be contracting with a third-party provider to provide that. Next is SB127, and that, there are actually going to be four RFPs related to SB127 for regional consultants, professional development, early literacy materials, and then community training and coaching. And then last, RFP is related to the School Turnaround Program. We're going to be contracting for an online needs assessment tool that will be approximately $880,000, and we're hoping to get that done by September 2020. That will be a resource for, I believe, all LEAs to be able to measure their school's readiness and assess how they're doing in terms of school improvement. And that's it. Okay, I don't see any more questions there. Do you, do we? And so we have a question, Jeff. I guess this is another, if you want to turn to your phones and to your. Yes. This is the most important one. What topics would you like to discuss in future meetings about the legislative session? And I did take notes of the things that you have mentioned before. If you want to re-enter them in, you can, but you don't need to because I was tracking. Vice Chair Davis?
Are you asking for subsequent years, like this study session following the legislative session, or are we having more sessions about this session?
What I'm thinking is, for example, somebody asked about business cases, or no, it was about the constitutional amendment. Like, what do we think might happen this interim about a potential constitutional amendment on income tax? That could be a topic that we discuss in two months or six months. It's not limited to this, a repeat of this study session. It's more about, are there things you want us to discuss over the next year in preparation for this upcoming legislative session or future legislative session?
Thanks for the clarification. I would love to hear more about the potential constitutional amendment as the discussions ensue. But I think this was a really thorough study session today, and it was a great format, and I just appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis. Board Member Lear?
Thanks. I'd love, and just to piggyback and fit on Cindy, I thank you for being patient with me. And it was fun to learn to do that and actually send out some hearts and cats. But I wanted to voice this instead of typing one more thing on my phone. And that is that I appreciate discussing it, and to the extent you think it's wise, but discussing strategy. I wish somebody would tell me if it is pointless for us to keep trying to get more money for all-day kindergarten, then let's say so, and let's stop, you know, beating that dead horse. If it's, if we can look at a different way to do it, let's strategize. I don't know if strategizing in a public meeting is the smartest thing to do, but I find that a lot more helpful and valuable than receiving information that I can just read. But I want to pick your brains because you folks have interaction in a lot more personal ways than we do with certain of policymakers. So that's what I would like to spend some time doing. What's the smartest way to limit these bills that just create more reports, to limit these bills that add another two programs to LEA's plates? And that kind of strategy would be helpful for me.
Thank you, Board Member Lear, Board Member Klein, your hands gone. So, okay, Chair Huntsman?
Thank you. I just wondered, I'm not seeing how, where I put it in this, this list, but this question for Angie, I think, is, is there a way in the legislative process there, as they're starting their bills, you know, we, there's always that piece of, of what's it going to cost? And we have that, they have the the fiscal note piece of it. Is there ever, do you think there's a way to recommend, or maybe the legislature would benefit? If there was some other consideration as a bill is being drafted of the the compliance piece, the reporting piece, just not in education and other areas, because that burden is somewhat heavy for just not public education, but there's, there's other parts of state services that are, that are out there that will carry that same weight. And I'm wondering if there's a checkbox, a consideration that when this bill, or when this, as this bill is being proposed and it moves through committee, everyone's eye seemed to be on the fiscal note, but sometimes might be conservative, but there could be another indicator that speaks to the reporting burden, and by whom? Is that, am I dreaming, or is that too big of a ask, or is there a process through the rural side, or? Madam Chair, can you have staff speak to that?
You bet, I can. Yes, and due to the passage of one of the bills last year that Representative Pulsofer passed, they are, they do note the reporting burden, but it is not something they actually have to fund. And so my experience is, and I say this in a very nice and kind manner, that legislators who want reports, or they want programs, or they're requiring certain things, often don't really like it when either USBE or other entities, the LEAs, et cetera, identify this is going to be a barrier on this because they just want their bills passed. They do not necessarily want to have to fund, say, an FTE for, you know, either USBE or for resources at LEA level. I think that they note it, but when they're passionate about something like, I don't know, we could bring up all those bills on the reports. They're, you know, whether it's about period products or civics education, or it's about this new innovation program, they're very passionate about it and they want those reports. And we try, let's just say that. We note it, we tell them. But sometimes they feel the policy is more important, like on the library sensitive materials. We gave a lot of feedback on what type of, and I'm not saying it's a good or bad thing, but that it would create potentially some burden in the LEAs to do some of these things, although that, maybe that's not a good example because that's existing law. But people are passionate about it, and so, but we do have those conversations. They just sometimes feels like they, it goes on to.
To the bill that you, may, can I follow up?
You bet.
To the bill you just talked about, and all of the bills that are going through, there wasn't any evidence that I saw that had any part of, or there wasn't any consideration on the reporting that's going to satisfy them. I'm just wondering if there's a pathway in going to legislative leadership or something to, I mean, the fiscal note's important. And this reporting is also, and it's transparent, it's all part of accountability. If you want to hold somebody accountable, then tell them what they got, how they demonstrate accountability and and address the cost of that too, because it still puts a burden on everyone in our state. So I'm just wondering if, it's, instead of, I'm not going to say we surrender to it, but is there a a process that maybe we lead out as a state board of education, say, we are not afraid of accountability, but as these bills are moving forward and then become statute, that in that spirit of accountability and clarity to what's being asked, yes, as it goes through, that all the legislators know of that burden. And I'm not.
No, I think, I like that. Maybe that's something we can do from our side, that every time we address it with them, that we say, this is what it's adding to this and this and this, so.
But, but it doesn't, if I can follow up, but it doesn't get to every legislator or everyone in the committee as they're making their, there's not an opportunity to really speak to that piece and be consistent all through the whole voting process. You know, we, I just wondered if there's some evolution there. So I, that's, that's all, we're not going to get it fixed today, but I think that would, I mean, these bills right now, that we're having to deal with, that have reporting burdens, how many of those bills have the fingerprints on them of passing or advocating for that in the same breath are saying we want to reduce it? And so I think we ought to just be as real and open and transparent as we possibly can as these burdens are being placed upon us. Roger, that concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Over. Okay, one last comment or question today. Board Member Hanson?
Thanks. Just on this reporting issue, I think that we have this snowball that every year more bills are passed, more reporting is required, and nothing gets removed from the inside of the snowball, so it keeps getting bigger and bigger. But the only way that we're going to make any headway is by raising awareness of that. And I think as we discussed yesterday with the training, to try to come up with a comprehensive, you know, list of training requirements and how many hours are required, we should do the same with reporting and say, this, these laws require these reports, lay that all out, let people see. I mean, we could talk about it all day and say it's a big problem, but until we quantify it and make it visible, I don't think that we're going to be able to make any headway. If we do that, I think that we can say, okay, new reporting is required for this. We understand that. What can we remove? And here's the list, you know, help us to shave something, get something out of the middle of this snowball so it doesn't keep getting bigger. So that would be my idea, I guess, or a way to move forward on the reporting.
Well, just keep handing them, well, I keep handing them the list every time.
The list would be, you know, we could have 100 pages that we could draw on their desk and say, here's what's required. But I don't think anybody grasps that when they're going through, like Chair Huntsman just said. They've got their bill, they've got their name on it, they want to get it passed, and it has to have accountability in it. And we can't argue that we're not going to be accountable if they're going to hand us money, so that argument's a loser. We've got to say, here's all the reporting that we're doing. Where can, you know, what can we do? What reports can we combine? What can we delete from before? What reports can we combine? What can we delete from before? Anyway, thanks for the time.
Thank you. Angie?
I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have, our, our contract was awarded with an attorney, Tracy Nettle. She is going to be developing that list of, it's going to include reporting, training, and other legal requirements that we will be bringing in then in Phase Two. It would be for things not just that USBE is responsible for or that goes through us, but Phase Two would be to get a, a list of all LEA reporting, training, and legal requirements. And so I think we will have that, and maybe we should see if they'll codify a rule that says for every report they codify, they have to eliminate two.
Three, three.
Three, right? Get a new piece of clothing, well, you got to take two out.
Where did my hearts go, Jeff?
Yeah, we lost our hearts. Board Member Norton?
Yes, and that's one of the things that we have been working on. Thank you, Jeff Van Holton in Finance with this very important topic, is to show that what, what we have recreated, what legislature has created, and also what USIMs is going to help with. But another thing that I was thinking would be helpful in this discussion is then, even after we have produced reports, but that we talk to legislators and say, you know, you got this program through, here's some initial reports back on, on how this is going. Does that meet your needs? And can that now end the report? Because sometimes they just need to see that, yep, what I wanted is happening. I don't need to see anything further going forward. And, and, you know, hopefully that could eliminate some of the things that we have also, that maybe we don't need to continue to keep reporting.
I appreciate that. Board Member Norton? Okay, that is the end of our time today, and I think that we all had a jovial time today in this meeting of what might not have been jovial. Thank you to Angie and to Jeff for their presentation, and thanks to all of you, and have a great weekend.